Mr. Dirk John, Assistant Superintendent of Police, Mr. Carlton Leetang, Second Division Officers, Residents of the Wim, Mount Grace, Mary's Hill, Spring Garden Community, Special Invited Guests, Members of the Media. Good evening. I am Alicia N. Piggott, Inspector of Police, and I'm your Chairperson for tonight. Before we go any further, I would like everyone to stand as we sing together lustily the national anthem. Thank you. I would like you to remain standing as we invite Mr. Shaun John, the PRO of the Wim Village Council, to come to the mic and give us the invocation.
Pleasant good night, all. Before we start, I want to thank you all for coming to our community and welcome you all to the village of Swam. She made a mistake and include Mount Grace. Mount Grace was not included. It's Marysville, Union, Spring Garden, Wim. Alright, so as we bow our heads tonight to pray. Heavenly Father, we want to give you thanks. Father, we want to thank you for bringing each and everyone here tonight, Lord. Father God, you are our Savior, you are our Maker. And Father God, you know the outcome of this meeting tonight. But first of all, Lord, those who are on their way, Father, guide them here safely. Those who are walking, he's in their footsteps. And those who are driving, Lord, take charge of the wheel, oh Jesus. Father God, members of the police service, is in our community, Lord. Father, you have granted them, or you have granted those with the wisdom and the knowledge to take care of our local island, Tobago. Father Lord, we know that you are a mighty God. And Father Lord, there is a saying, Lord, that after you, the police. But Father Lord, even the police need you in these times. So Father, I'm asking you to download the information that they will need for them to operate. I ask you all of this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Could you all please have your seats? Thank you, Mr. John. I would like to now call on WPC La Bla to bring greetings.
Good evening. Senior Superintendent of Police, Mr. Randall Cook. Acting Superintendent of Police, Mr. Mark Joseph. Acting Assistant Superintendent of Police, Mr. Sonel Barrett. Acting Assistant Superintendent of Police, Mr. Dirk John. Acting Assistant Superintendent of Police, Mr. Carlton Leetang. The Tobago Division of the Trinidad and Tobago Police Service continues to embrace the community policing philosophy. Since we realize that crime has to be a partnership, and while the police will do what is needed, we must also engage the public who we serve. Community engagement is critically important in the fight against crime. It is not about police working on their own, but working in partnership with the public, using a problem-solving approach by going into the communities and working with them, which is one of the reasons why we are here tonight. Whilst doing this, we are also working within by training our officers to build capacity so that they can be competent to better serve you. The division at this time is enjoying a 32% detection rate, and we are certain later into the week it will increase. We would like to hear from you. Not just us, but also to hear from you. Or not you hearing from us alone, but we also want to hear from you. Let your voice be heard. Don't sit on the sideline. Don't sit on the rocks at the beach. Don't sit by the wayside muttering, "I don't trust the police", as you never encountered a bad experience from the trust of the police. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to your tongue meeting.
I want to hear another clap from Miss La Bla.
Yes!
She spoke it. Do not stay by the sidelines, and because you are here, you are not standing by the sidelines. You are, I want, when the time comes for you to go to the mic, we want your voices to be heard. Is Miss Kendra Murray here? Not as yet. I will now call on Senior Superintendent, Mr. Rudell Kirk, to bring the address to you tonight. Mr. Rudell Kirk.
Good evening to the members of the community of Spring Garden, Wim, Union, Marysville. I think I get it right. Swam? Right. Well, I'm a stranger to your community. I would just want to take this opportunity to thank all the persons who made their business to appear here tonight. Also recognize members of the media. And I also want to thank the rest of my team. Superintendent, Mr. Joseph. Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Leetang, Mr. John. They are all part of the new team who are in charge of overseeing policing in Tobago's space. Now, I know why we are here. The first speaker would have mentioned about people say they don't trust the police. Who do you rather trust? And something that I've noticed over the past few months is that we are seeing some strange persons are being embraced and accommodated within the community, your community. Not only your community, we have seen it throughout Tobago. And even as recent, two weeks ago, a person was held in Golden Lane with possession of firearm, and he's from nowhere in Golden Lane. And there are persons held elsewhere with possession of firearms, ammunition, drugs, you name it. And they are not even from within our communities. But you know what? We sit and say we don't trust the police. And yet, these people have been given your trust. So you take them, you feed them, you shelter them. And at the end of the day, they turn around and bite you. Now, I could speak of a personal experience that someone once told me. He started to help this guy who had a little trouble with his law. And he went and he took his bail. He brought him in the Scarborough. He purchased food. He purchased clothes. And he left him in his car for a short while to go into the supermarket. And he left a pile of money on top behind the visor because he's a taxi driver. And when he came back out, the man gone, the money gone. So he make a block around town and so on. After a few, after about half an hour, he meet up on the guy. And he's saying, "Boy, I do all this thing for you. You mean you will bite the hand that feed you?" Here what this guy turned and tell his friend. "So who on you expect me to bite? Not the one that closes to my mouth." So I'm saying this to see that we have to be careful how we operate, we have to be more aware. And this is why when this team took over management of the police in Tobago. Well, Mr. Hees is not here, but he is our Assistant Commissioner in charge of Tobago and Eastern. I am the Senior Superintendent, which is the Divisional Commander. What we propose to do, we walk the ground. And Mr. Barrett here, he's from Trinidad, Mr. Joseph, Trinidad, myself. Everybody sitting there except myself are from Trinidad. But this is Trinidad and Tobago, and this is why they are here. We began to walk, and we hear people say, when we ask, "What is the biggest issue you have with the police?", and they say, "Trust". So part of our mandate was to start to rebuild trust and confidence in how the police do business. The other aspect, we recognize that there was some upsurge in violent crime. We started to have shootings, robberies. And we focus on trying to detect these crimes. And with so doing, we know that as police officers, part of our duty is crime prevention. So we embark on a mission to prevent crime. And in spite of all the challenges, we sat down and we came up with strategies in terms of treating it out. So that is why now you will see the police more in your community, passing through the communities. Some of you may not see the times that we pass, but I'm certain that we are there. And I'm pleased to see, and I sometimes do that. Within the past couple of weeks, we have seen a decrease in these violent crimes. And we have, because of our intelligence-led policing, we have arrested a number of the perpetrators who are now before the court for the robberies and for the break-ins. And I want to thank all my police officers who showed that level of dedication and devotion to duty to bring those perpetrators to justice. One of the most recent one, there was a robbery in Government House Road. And within less than 20 minutes, the perpetrators were arrested. The firearm was recovered. And that shows a little bit of dedication. And Sergeant Daniel, I want to recognize you. He's one of the officers that led that team that night, that led to the recovery of that firearm and the items that were stolen. And this is what we are about. Now, people often complain that the police have attitude. Police don't talk to we like human beings. We do see the police coming in our community and engaging the people. And I'm certain that before this tongue meeting take place, that officers were on the ground, Inspector Piggott, and a team were on the ground, moving house to house, trying to, you know, have that conversation with you. The reason why you are here tonight is not about us. Because we recognize that if we have to fix crime, crime is everybody's business and not only the police. Alright, as Robert Peel would have said, the people are the police and the police are the peoples. So it's we have to fix things within our communities. And if we sit down and let people take charge or take over our communities, just now, you can't even leave your house without asking them permission. And we can't allow Tobago to reach that state. Because for those of you who live here, you know that Tobago depends highly upon our tourism product. And you know, with every crime that occur, especially those of the homicide, it has an impact on the economy of Tobago. In fact, when one murder happened in Tobago, although you may see a hundred in Trinidad, that one murder in Tobago is referenced like about 200 that occurred in Trinidad. Because the one could cause such an impact that it could keep monies from coming into your pocket. So we have to police our own space. And sometimes it may feel we may come here just to talk. We do this because we care about fixing crime in your community. And some of the things that I recognize is that when the police intend to take some action sometimes, even we, the people within our community, somehow show that we upset with the police, why they don't go and find real criminals. But when we leave, and you know, Mr. Robinson had the speech about streams flowing the rivers. Rivers flow into seas. It become a bigger problem that it becomes beyond our control. And you know who we look to fix the problem? Why the police then come and fix the problem? And I want to urge you, the members of the community, as we leave here after this meeting, is for you to reflect. Even right on the corner there, I noticed that when I passed there on a daily basis, I see they have business operating there, but I see some, I don't know the reason for them being there. They're just there smoking, doing all kind of thing. And like the people who own the businesses, like they're comfortable with that. I don't know, because when something happen, and these fellows do their thing elsewhere, and people run up. Innocent people would be at risk. And that happened in the middle of Scarborough, it happened in Speyside. These are things, something that I want to talk about as well. We have to protect our own space. And the reason why I say that? I looked at a video footage and something that happened in Wim. And I saw like somebody just walk up on the street, walk in a business place, take up what he want, and he left. And he left casually. And I know those areas are areas that are densely populated by persons on a daily basis. So I am trying to figure out what just happened there. Long time when somebody come in your community, those kind of thing could not happen. I am telling you what usually would happen, but that can happen. Alright, so we have to become that where we used to be long ago. When you see something strange, or you see somebody strange, find out who is, or she. And next thing what we recognize is that people let out apartments to people. And they don't even know their names. How could that be possible? And when they let out the two people here, by next week, it's about 10 people in your apartment. Alright, and you don't know who, somebody hiding from something somewhere. And when you get comfortable and you realize you are soft target, you clean out your whole house. And yet, you know what? At the end of the day, you don't even know who was in your apartment. So this is something I'm encouraging you all going forward. When you do your homework, it makes it easy for the police to treat your problem. And don't let nobody watch you and say, "Well, you're informal", because you about protecting you and your generation and your children. Adults nowadays passing youths on the road. And they can't even tell them, "Oh, rude". How come it come to a point where we can't even talk to all young people? Why we can't talk to them? Why we can't encourage them to do better? And plenty of these young people now, they're living on their own, no? They're living in your house. Your house they're living in, no? So I don't want to make this night all about me or all about the police. We are here to reach you face to face so that you can discuss, share with us some of the issues which affects your community. And we will try to address some of those issues as best as we can as it relates to properly policing your area. Because Tobago has gone from what it used to be to another place now. And we have to bring it back because we live in this space. The police are not, can't be omnipresent. We can't be everywhere. We can't be in everybody yard, we can't be everybody at the same time. But if we form a relationship that information comes to us timely when something happens in your community, we will be able to respond to that as quick as possible. Now, we know that we are not perfect. We know that there are times people say that they call the police and the response is poor. Or, "I called them since yesterday and I waited for the fingerprint man and they didn't come yet." Now, I am sure that everybody know where my office is. And I'm sure that almost everybody in Tobago have my number now. Right, and I'm, and all these officers here, we are about solution, we are not about the problem. Right, we are about solution. And once you treat with us on a level, when something happens, we can help you as best as we can. And this is why we are here. It's not about, again, if you say you can't trust the police, let me ask you one question. Can you trust the bandit? Can you trust the robber? Can you trust the murderer? Because they are right among you, no? They are right among you. Now, I know people have a concern, I just want to say it generally, people have a concern about, we have 10 murders for the year and only 2 saw so far. We have had better years. And I want to tell people, in spite of what you are saying, that very soon, you should see some of those persons responsible end up before the court. You see, a murder investigation is like a language. Things are at a point where you have to get it right the first time. So sometimes it takes some time to get everything compact so that when you go before the court, you have the evidence or the information you receive converted into evidence, which you can now put that person before a court. And even so, with all the hard work the police do in respect of a murder, murderers now are granted bail. And they come back within your community again and decide to repeat if you don't be careful. So again, I don't want to belong to, we have seen a lot of issues indeed. This is why we chose you. We have seen shootings. We have seen murder. We have seen woundings. We have seen break-ins. We have seen domestic violence. We have seen abuse. All this happens within your community. And this is why we choose it. Because if we don't come to engage you to talk about it and to see how we could fix it, when we may be spinning topping mud. You are our most important stakeholders. And I repeat, you are our most important stakeholders. The police has the responsibility of serving and protecting you. You are the one have to embrace us. And I want to see with all of this in the last couple of weeks, we have seen persons getting on, persons getting on board to walk alongside the police. And we have seen the results of that. So again, it is important that you partner with us as we would like to partner with you so that we can fix your community issues. And so that crime, we should adopt a zero tolerance approach towards crime. And we want that when you see something, let us know. Don't say, "Trust us", because there must be, you could trust us because our police living in your community. And I assure you all before you leave there, could engage with any of the senior officers here. If you don't trust, we can fix that. So again, I want to thank each and every business. It shows that you care about your people. And I want to applaud that. And I want to thank you for that. So again, we will sit, we will listen, you will come to the mic. Any issue that you have, that you think that the police should address, or the police did, let us know so that in going forward, we can fix it and have a better relationship with you, the community of Swam, Spring Garden, Wim, Union, Marysville. Again, thank you. And I look forward to engaging you for the rest of the night.
Thank you, Senior Superintendent Kirk. The common word that you hear tonight is, let us, or the common words we hear tonight is togetherness. Persons, the police cannot own, and we have to come to the communities and ask for your assistance. Let me just say, big up, as the young people would say, Tobago Updates. We are live, streaming live on Tobago Updates. So you can send the link to your friends and family. Let them know that the tongue meeting is going on. At this point in time, I want to call on persons to go to the mic, which is in the middle there, and to air your concerns, one, to give your ideas, not to bash the police, but to give the ideas, what you would want, what you would like to see. And to those persons who want to congratulate the police, we also invite you to go to the mics. Now, persons, before you go to the mic, I want to remind you, you must say your name and give a general area where you're from. You're not going to, you don't have to say the street you are from, but the village. I just want to say to persons, right, that the police, I heard Mr. Kirk speaking about it. On Wednesday, the police hit the ground. On Thursday, the police hit the ground. We went to over 300 homes, I'm sure of that. Mr. Michael Baker went around and announced it. Down to the, a police officer here is telling me that he heard it in his church. So we would have done all that we could do to get the people to come here. So probably the next time, we would have to take the water to them. So I am inviting you all to come to the mic. As I said, don't rush, take your time and get to the mic. Give your name and generally where you are from.
My name is Marilyn Spence Joe Field, Vice President of the Wim Police Youth Club. I am from Wim. Right now, the Wim Police Youth Club, we are begging you for assistance. We try in all corners and we not get into. I bring the document with me. So are you able to assist the Wim Credit Union? Because we need to help you. Because we have plenty youths in Wim. We have plenty youths in Wim and we need the youths. Because the youths are our future. So please, officers, can you help us, please? I'm at your mercy. Thank you.
Hi, President. Good night. My name is Sean John. I'm from the village of Marysville. Three questions to the police. One, I wanna deal with cars, transportation. People always have a problem in calling the police. They don't have vehicles. My observation. The police is a daytime police with vehicles or police night and day. Because the most vehicles you could see parked up in the police station is after four o'clock. They can be or shovan police station. The amount of vehicles that in the shovan police station that got into accident or for a part. I want to ask if that you can't take one of those vehicles to fix one? Because I saw vehicles there which is of the same kind and that could use the same parts. And the ordinary citizens have Nissan vehicles that you can use parts from different vehicles. And the police keep complaining about vehicles. My question to you, sir, when a police officer crashed that vehicle in his duties, that police officer is still being able to drive an next vehicle? Or is suspended until the investigation of that vehicle's why the accident is his fault or whatever? Because it seems like they must stop vehicles and because they know they're getting a next vehicle to drive and just go and park up. But you could correct me if that is not so. This question is that report that made to the police station. When you go to make a report, you're supposed to get a receipt. The receipts does come from Trinidad. Most likely, everything does come from Trinidad for Tobago. But why is it when you go to make a report at a particular time, no receipt book? No receipt book. The receipt book finished. How that could be possible? That if you have a receipt book or a books is coming from Trinidad that you have to give receipts to citizens, you have to wait till it finish till they send it from Trinidad or you supposed to, or whoever is responsible supposed to know that here, Tobago books is going on finish next week. We want it this week. Why we have to get that from that police saying that we have no receipt? And you have to leave without a receipt. These are simple things. I want to know the answer. This third question is, is there a report of dismissal of police officers in misbehavior in office? Or they just keep it and the citizens do not know? Because they say we don't trust the police. People say that. They don't trust the police. I trust the police. But the average citizens say that they do not trust the police. Because what you might not know, the citizen may know about police officers. But if the citizens hear that officer so and so have been dismissed, officer so and so have been dismissed, they will say, well, yes, they are doing work inside. So I want to ask the question tonight on that, if there is a number or if there's a figure or we do not do that because it compromises the police officer. That is one of my questions.
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, let me, I am now. Let me recognize Minister Shangfo Kudjou who has just arrived. Right? And I will proceed to answer this, this Spence Joe Field answer in terms of the Police Youth Club. Now, now, part of our initiative, we also about youth development and we have some active police youth club and I could tell you, Mr. Brafit here is the leader of the Monks in George Youth Club, which is thriving at this point in time. There's also the Charlottesville Police Youth Club, which is also thriving and Roxborough. Now, it's something that we have on the drawing board in terms of treating with the youths. I have looked, started to look at the documents and I realized that you have been making the effort. Um in one of our last meetings, our ACP, Mr. Hazel, spoke about, you know, reaching out to his office for persons who have issues with Police Youth Club and, and management of the Police Youth Club. So I'm going to direct you now that, you know, at some stage, you could pay a visit to Mr. Hazel's office. Yeah, you want to say something?
I'm Marilyn Spence Joe Field. Visit Mr. Hazel's office and I give him one of that said document I give you.
Well, I know he, I know he's.
On a response.
I know he will be adjusting it because one of our last meeting, he spoke about it. And I am going to remind him concerning this document that you, you, you shared so that we could treat with the issue of Police Youth Club in Wim to either reactivate it. I know there was an officer, um King, who was here and she was relocated to Trinidad. So I know that, that's why the youth club went a bit dormant. Um so going forward, we will treat with you. I will remind him upon his return about the issue about the Wim Police Youth Club. Right? Um and the next question raised was about Mr. John, you spoke about police vehicles. And I know sometimes you would see a lot of vehicles parked up in the station. And you're wondering, well, where is the issue with them? Some of these vehicles really have a lot of issues, one. But I know, I don't know what era or what year you are speaking about. I can assure you that within recent times, no such thing could happen where you call the police and they tell you they have no vehicles. And I, I'm saying that with confidence. Because even throughout our night patrols now, it has increased significantly. Our daytime patrols, we have patrols, joint operational patrols with the Defense Force. And that is ongoing on a daily basis for the past many months. So what we did within of recent times, we had additional resources came to the island and we have been patrolling throughout the London Bridge of Tobago. Uh throughout the nights as well as the day. This is why you find that within times you have that ease at night where you see you're not having any these kind of behavior, behavior on the streets. Because these officers are all there trying to draw the line. Um the other issue that we have police officers who would charge with misbehavior in public office, that information would not be, you could say available at one police station, but it's public information, right? We don't publish a list to say, well, okay, this person was charged. Right? But that is information that you can even secure through uh freedom of information. So it's not that, okay, we will have it and don't give the public. The public have mechanism which they can obtain that information. Right? Um you talk about the, the, the vehicles at Shovan Road. Now you see government property. It's easier said than done. Although the vehicles are there, there are so much processes you have to go through in terms of taking apart from, because you know each weekly after ordering each vehicle eh? Taking apart just so from one vehicle to put on the next vehicle, that could land you in hot water if you do that just so. That have to go through one set of processes. And these are things that are done. But it's a lengthy process in terms of doing it because you see what happened? We don't want at the end of the day, when they do an audit, some part missing and who gets blame. So you have to go through the process, the correct process. And now that you have um procurement laws in place now, you can't just even, I mean, there are so many, many different things you have to do in terms of even getting the part for the vehicle. Right? But until we, we, we have seen the issue, we have discussed the issue and with our, um with our transport section, they came to Tobago just recently. We looked at all the vehicles there. We examined them. We, we identified those that can be repaired. And they gave us the undertaking that they will treat with those vehicles going forward. Right? So I know within the near future, you will see some of those vehicles being repaired. But they came and they started the process and they will have to continue the process going forward. So that the issues of the vehicles that you see there that look like, yes, but there's a process in which to treat with it. Right? So I think that covers the receipt book again too. I don't know if any stationers have two receipt books at one time and that is policy basically. Sometimes we are not able to get it at the same time, but still that doesn't prevent the stations from giving you a receipt. They just prove that you made a report. So even if you don't have the official book, the police could give you, issue you a document indicating that you made a report and whoever is dealing with it. That is no hard and fast thing to do. So even if you don't have the official receipt book, I know it is practiced at the stations that when they, when they don't have the receipt book, they will prepare a document and give it to you indicating that you made a report on such date, such time and who are the officers attended to, to your report. Right? Until receipt books are, you know, coming because everything inside the, the TTPS, you have to audit. And that is why sometimes I know people have the question about at the end of the month, when they want to do a certificate character. Once the month end, it closes all the auditors. And about two days into the new month or three days, the most, before the new books arrive, you start back the process. That is the policy that we reach. We, we try to have it, you know, change, but for some reason, we haven't arrived at that as yet. Right? So those are some of the things that we have to treat with in terms of these day to day issues in the TTPS. Right? You can.
Adventist church in the community. So I want to start by issuing a public apology to the community for the inconvenience that we normally present to you on a Saturday. Um when our church started over six days ago, I don't think it was perceived that Plymouth Road would become such a major trophy. And I don't think it was perceived that so many members would have been vehicle owners. We are working on it. And if there's anybody here who has access to lands nearby that we maybe do to enter into some arrangement for parking on Saturdays, we'll be happy to talk with you because we are mindful that we do create some inconvenience and we're not happy to have it continue indefinitely. Alright, that being said, I want to just share a few comments, not necessarily ask questions that I think may be useful as we go forward. Um first of all, I want to ask of you not to ignore the challenge of trust between the public and the police service. None of the officers here tonight may be responsible for the erosion of trust in the, but you unfortunately have that legacy to deal with. So my encouragement is that you don't ignore it, but continue the efforts to rebuild the trust that the public once had in the police service. Uh secondly, Mr. Kirk, you made a reference to sometimes people commenting negatively about police exercises. Um on that, I say this much, it's not only what you do, it is often how you do it. I remember having, there, there are two experiences that I talk about having been in road traffic exercises. And I remember two very distinct approaches by two different officers in terms of how I was approached. One of them approached me as though I was a criminal on the run. And the other approached me as though I was a citizen that he did not know and would want to know. So I'm just saying, sometimes it is not the what you do, it is the how you do it. One of the things that I have observed, and I may not be best placed to speak on this categorically, I'm just sharing my observation because I've only been living in this area for twenty-two years. I may be what you call a transplant. But I have not been able in those years to observe very many police officers who seem to be from the area. And those who I knew living in the area seem to have moved on because what I am observing is that this area is basically now a rental hub as it were. A significant number of the residents of the area, including me, attendants. And so sometimes it is difficult to always keep a firm grasp, especially if the police officer is not from the area, to keep a firm grasp on who people are. And so that may be something we'd want to, to look at as to how we can explore. I know the government has one program where when the government sets up housing projects, they make the allowances for police officers. But in areas like this where that is not the case, I'm not sure how it can be done, but it may be something that's worth considering. Um I did mention that I am not originally from the area and that is the case with many others. And so it's difficult even sometimes to keep track of your neighbors. I've been living in the same place now for fourteen and a half years. And there are some people that I don't know. Because in some of the areas, there's a quick turnover because some people may have come to Tobago to work for a six months or a three month period and then they leave. So they come and they go and you never know who they were. And so that, that too is another challenge. One of the other challenges I have observed is that there is a significant paucity of certain levels of literacy in our community. That I have discovered easily lends itself to violence even among friends. Because when you cannot properly communicate and exchange ideas, according to the latest prangal, and we feel the next best thing to do is to beat it into them. And so sometimes even when friends in a social setting disagree, then it turns violent. And I'm sure most of you, especially if you've been serving as long as some of you at the head table, could have heard. Officer, I, I didn't really plan to chop him. I didn't really plan to kill him. But because there's a challenge with literacy and the ability to communicate ideas, even though the views vary, then we have this. Our church has decided to contribute some to stem the, 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 the levels of illiteracy that, that we find just flowing through society. So a few months ago, we started a community tutoring caravan. Ironically, we are using the building that has been assigned to the Wim Police Youth Club. But we have been doing that and we have been seeing quite some progress among the young people. Um we of course would. Um we of course would appreciate some support, so not only from the police, members of the community, if you can. Spare your time, spare some of your resources to assist us in doing this. Because we are discovering other challenges that I am not at liberty to speak of openly. But we are discovering other challenges as we work through that. So we would appreciate the support of anybody, whether police or not. Who is able to support us in this community tutoring caravan, as well as there is a music class. Is corporal now? The initiative of corporal brotherhood.
Mm hmm.
At the church. So if you have children in the area who needs assistance with homework or you'd like them to learn some music. At the church, almost every day of the week. There are music classes and at the Wim Police Youth Club building. On Mondays and Thursdays, we offer tutoring for youngsters. These are just orbits in terms of trying to help with safety and security in our community because we believe. If people are gainfully and safely engaged, then they won't have time for criminal activity. Thank you.
And thank you for your contributions now. But I'm happy that you made mention of the concern in terms of the traffic situation. On Saturdays, I myself, you know, sometimes wonder. This parking situation is very hazardous. But I'm, you know, I appreciate the fact that you put it on the front burner. And then you, you know, you, you, you want to address it. But some men that have to be addressed soon, sooner than later because. I've travels that area on a Saturday and see. The dangers, you know, with the parking in the corner there. So that is something that you could address. I, I also. You know, I, I thank you for your contribution in terms of. What you and your organization are doing in terms of assisting with the youths in the community. Also rightly said, you made mention of the tenants. And in my address, you would have heard me talk about it. We, the people, have to also be responsible. We must take proper information of the persons that who stay or who we. Invite into our homes, you know, as tenants. And we have to do that. Because we noticed it in this community and this is why I was able to talk about it. At the end of the day, when something happened, you know, is that fellow who was staying here? But who knows him? Nobody. Not even a name, ID card, number, address, where you came from before, nothing at all. So this is something that we had to start a practice in the community to be more diligent in terms of the persons who we encourage in our space. Right? Um. I see somebody else up to the mic. Uh this. Alright, go ahead, Mister Joe Field.
Good night. My name is Lennox Joe Field. Officially from Wimbach Hill. I'm now living at Addle Isle. I came to Scarborough Police Station, I went to Scarborough Police Station. I made a report where I was threatened. By gunfire. And I'm very, very much dissatisfied with the action the police took. They never turn up. To even talk to the person who treated me, never. And I'm more than a year now, they're never. And I'm very much dissatisfied with that issue. And now if the police respond when you get information. It ma- make you the reporter a little more comfortable. Because I could have been a dead man now. Right? I should be, I could have been a worse. Alright? So. It's a natural course. My next issue is, um. Road signs. Stop at me, jar road, slow at me, jar road. No right turn, no left turn. The regulation that I did. In nineteen seventy eight. Did not give me the regulation, the thing I seen on the roadside. A right turn sign, a no right turn sign, a slash across it, no boarding below. I do a regulation since that year. They do the regulation after it. So how am I to remember that a sign that slashed with the arrow mean no right turn or no left turn? Why at all intersection, you have a S T O P mark? But in all the other areas, even the slow at me, jar road. Basically, the marking supposed to be a broken line onto a solid line, telling you that you're supposed to slow or stop. And the officer and them need to correct that because. I fall victim to charges. Now, I, I was also a. Driving instructor. I did driving instructor for a while. Right? So we need to correct those things. The markings on the road must be a regulation. And not you coming and put a sign with a slash across it, saying, no, and I must understand that mean right, no right turn. A slash across it, that mean no left turn. A slash across, no entry. Come on, we need to see the writing on the wall. So we make it easier for. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your contribution now.
Good night everyone, I am. Good night everyone, I am Lynn Bruce Thomas. As senior soup skirt said, you all have more vehicles, more patrol, right? I agree with that. And as. Listen, Kegot said, we like to entertain strangers. And in this meeting, they did so many homes in the walkabout. But I am making a suggestion now, right? The other, the officers should go into, come into the community, not in their uniforms. But as ordinary citizens and mingled with the people. You know where the hotspots are? You visit them. So you, you deal with the people, you get information and you know how to work. That is my suggestion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, let me just address something for Mister Joe Field in terms of traffic signs. That is really not the function of the police. There's a traffic management unit. Who I know previously they used to have a board in Tobago constituted with. Police. Licensing office. People from the books department, traffic. Management unit. And they will come up with the best place in which how to put the signs and so on. Um. I don't know if it's still functional. But I know. I understand what you are saying in terms of some of the signs. And almost every morning. I just had to talk about right where you live that area, you live there. People coming from and down vehicle and there's a stop sign there and they just go straight across. Sometimes when I come in from Lekato side and turn left. People coming straight across from out. Sometimes I just, you recognize a sign there. So. These are things we had to be mindful of and I, I can remember. You know, um the thing about it, most of the traffic violations are strict liability. So we tell you that even if you don't, you didn't know that it was there. Is still liable, there are strict liability offenses and that what makes it, you know it. So. I take your point and it's something that we'll have a discussion with the traffic management unit. Even some of the signs and them are not properly. I could say written. Because how they are placed sometimes if you don't understand what is written on the signs. And this is a place, as I said, tourism is an important thing and we have to have proper roadsideage. So that people could identify places and we must be up to, you know, um old standard.
Yeah, concerning the repairs of the police vehicles, right?
Mm hmm.
I had a recent discussion with a gentleman who is willing. To assist in repairing the vehicle at no charge. If you want to speak to me after, you can have a discussion.
I can do that and even today, someone reached out to me and respected that as well. So it means that something is happening positively. That corporate Tobago. Is willing to get on board. So. I appreciate that. I will speak with you after. Right? Um again. I don't. Anything. Right? Oh. At this point, I think, um, well, I'll speak with you after and, and speakers. Yes, she is. Yeah, you can speak with me.
Before I call on Minister Shantaka Joe, I just want there is a special. Um dance that, okay, one of the young people from this village would like to do. And I know one of them, um, nine years old and I know she would want to go home to compensate. So I would like to call on Miss Kendra to bring her dance move please.
Where, where the dance move? But this is.
Saint Michael's youths coming right out of the Wim village. Let me now call an honourable Mrs. Shantaka Joe Lewis, Member of Parliament for Tobago West. And Minister of Sports and Community Development to bring greetings to you.
Uh. Alright, hi, good evening. It's extended to everyone. All the different ranks of our national security force, or should I say the Trinidad and Tobago Police Service. Um the members of the community, I'm also a resident of the community, so I stand before you. Most so as a resident of the community. I've been a representative for Tobago West for the past nine years and I must say I'm pleased. By this initiative where the TTPS is coming out and meeting face to face with the people we serve. I think that uh crime reduction is an all of society uh type of thing. Where yes, the police has its work to do, but we as a community, we have a will in raising solid citizens and. Uh notifying the police when we see things and hear things and we know things. And also the judiciary has its work to do because sometimes the police put down some good work. And catch the criminal and then when you go to court, they get bail or they're not dealt with properly at the level of the court. But at the end of the day, what I'm saying is that this is a responsibility for all of us. I do have my issues, my questions, my concerns, just like you do in Trinidad and Tobago. And I would speak specifically for Tobago and Tobago West, the reports of criminal activity in the community. Has increased tremendously over the years. Um it gets closer and closer to home year after year. So um we are thankful for whatever help we can get from the uh TTPS, from the police youth club. Also, I remember moving from Tobago East to Tobago West in nineteen ninety. And the Betel Police Youth Club was a central part of our community in Bethel. And as you go from place to place, you have police youth clubs like Mason Hall Police Youth Club is doing good work. I know Larry is doing wonderful work in Mount St George to the point that sometimes we partner, he would reach out for funding. And we would support. But you have some groups, you have some persons with ideas. But they are not structured in such a way that they can truly plan and execute the proper program. So we would like to see more police officers. Taking the front line and uh really working with the communities to restore police youth clubs throughout. There are persons like um Miss Lashley, I don't remember her first name, there are persons like Marsha Phillips. It's a couple really good officers in the mix that work with young people. We are grateful for that and we'd like to see more. There are some issues relating to the receipt book. Uh relating to getting your. Certificate of good character, sometimes we, and, and, and we, we encounter some problems. And I think that some of those issues can be managed in the system of the police. It doesn't really have to do anything with government or anybody preventing the police from being managed properly as it relates to the specific issues. The fixing of vehicles. At the end of the day, it's about, it's about the management of personnel and the management of. day, it's about the management of personnel and the management of resources. No one entity has all the resources it needs, but it also boils down to management. Uh, we used to have a complaint where when a police officer is ready to retire, most of the commissioners of police or the head of police they send to Tobago used to be ready to retire. And we were tired of that. So I am happy that today we have a younger crop of police officers leading the charge in Tobago. We see many familiar faces. We see people who are really, really genuine and really committed to the task, going out there and doing their work. They work hard. I think we have a good crop of officers here. So, um, I want to thank you for your work. I would like to see you doing more of this interaction with the community because oftentimes we think that the police is far from the people. You report and you don't feel like you get the type of response. But if we can communicate and interact with you and in every division, take responsibility for what is... If you focus on your division, if you mind your business in your division, if all of us mind our business in all division, all of us, Tobago would be better. So oftentimes we want to point finger at somebody else, but as I said, the responsibility is all our responsibility. Churches have to do what they're supposed to. Schools have to do what they're supposed to. Parents, every single one of us. So I want to thank you for this interaction, this engagement. On behalf of the Tobago West constituency, the residents of Wim and environs, we thank you and we hope to see you once again more often in Tobago West. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Kudrow Lewis. Don't leave out the Lewis. I will now call on WP Serge. Let me welcome Mr. Kelvin Morris, Minority Leader and Representative of Wim Spring Garden. Thanks for coming. Let me call on Sergeant Daniel Cook to give us the vote of thanks. Good afternoon, each and everyone. To the Honorable Ms. Shampaka Joe Lewis, the Member of Parliament of Tobago West and the Ministry of Sports and Community Development, Mr. Kelvin Morris, the Leader and Your Area Representative for the Dallas Spring Wim. To our executive table, from Senior Superintendent Rodel Kirk, our Superintendent, Mr. Mark Joseph, our ASPs starting from ASP West, Mr. ASP Barrett. We also have ASP from East, Mr. Dirk John, along with ASP, Mr. Letham. We must say thank you to the entire village of the Spring Garden, Wim, Union and Maryhill for coming out here today, along with members of the Saint Michael Youth Dance Club. And I must say special thanks to the member of the community police team for putting this activity together here, along with all second division officer. I thank each and everyone. And from what was given here today, we can only do this together. At the end of the day, the police cannot do it by ourselves. Crime is everyone's business. Just as our forefather, Mr. Robert Spiel, would have stated, the people are the police. You are considered our eyes and our ears. And without your information, we cannot do it. You can put your trust in this new team that is in front of you. And just as how our Honorable Ms. Shampaka Joe just said, this team is really genuine. And this team before you is also committed to the task. You can put your trust in this team as we work together to make this community a safe and better place. When you see something, please say something. We thank you for coming out here today. So let me put in a plug here for the woman beside the P R O who came, who came up on the podium. It's only women, women power tonight. The men at the head table, we, we, we go get there, we go get there. Um, let me call on W P C Samaru.
Before you do that, before you do that, I just want to, after listening, Minister, you know, I just want everybody inside here to know that this is an ongoing initiative in terms of meeting the communities. We have done it in several different communities already in Tobago. This is one of our mandate in terms of our strategic pillar, community engagement. And we are mandated to at least two town meetings per month. So this is something that has started and it will continue throughout the year, that we will meet with people, with communities, whether it be through our station councils or through this kind of platform. This is something that is going to happen. So it wouldn't be the first time you would be seeing us in your community. I just want to put that on record. Thank you.
Before we close the town meeting, I will just ask Mr. Kelvin Morris, being that this is his, his, um, village he representing, to give us a one minute, um, greeting.
Let me say pleasant good evening and thank you. Thank you for putting a time limit because you're no politician when we in front of Michael we could get. So all protocols observed, let me welcome the, um, executive manager team of the TTPS, the best community in big... We really want to commit to this mandate to engage us. We know leasing and the security. Um, a key component of that is really having partnerships. And it is therefore important that we work together, both the community, the residents and the police service to ensure that we are able to provide the community with a safe place for our young people to, to be able to socialize. Um, as you know, Wim is one of those areas would have been identified over the years as a hotspot, but we have come a good, a long way. And it is because of some of the social interventions, the partnerships that we have had with the police service and other community organizations, such as we have the Police Youth Club. And I must commend Ms. Marilyn for really pushing that initiative, that Police Youth Club, along with all the other persons. So we want to continue that engagement. We want to continue to ensure that we continue to have this kind of continuous partnership in the swamp community. So we look forward to having you not just in this forum, but seeing boots on the ground, seeing your men engaging with the, with the people in the community on the ground, walking, not just driving through, but actually walking the community so that we can put faith to the people who are entrusted with our security. I want to thank you and I encourage you to keep up the work, keep up the fight in terms of keeping Tobago safe. Have a blessed night and thank you for the short one minute word of engagement.
You have done well, sir. Let me call on W P C Samaru to give us the closing prayer to send us away with blessings.
All protocol observed. We bow our heads and close our eyes. Heavenly Fathers, we come to you, this Almighty God, you are in control. We thank you for another successful town meeting held by the Trinidad and Tobago Police Service and by extension, Tobago Division. Father God, all that was discussed here tonight may not go on deaf ears, but serve as a catalyst to move us forward and that it will foster a better relationship with the public, within the communities and the police service. Father God, I want to pray that you give us divine, especially to my colleagues, Father, from the head to the end, Father God, that you give us wisdom, knowledge and understanding and strength, Father God, so that we can fight against this crime that is plaguing our island, that is plaguing Trinidad and Tobago. Give us the wisdom so that we can portray and do our duties when we are out there day and night, that we are safe. God help us to build that relationship with the public, that they can feel safe to come to us, that they could talk to us, they could call on us anytime, Father God, that we could win back our island, Trinidad and Tobago. Father God, I pray against crime. I declare that no weapon formed against Trinidad and Tobago shall prefer, Father God. I pray that you take us all home safely, Father God. We ask you in this name, in not a name, but in Jesus' name.
Thank you all for coming again. Before you leave, especially the civilians, we have something, some refreshments for you.